I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Okay. You have copies of the minutes from our October 4th joint meeting and our October 10th public hearing and October 10th regular meeting.
Motion to approve both, sir.
Second.
Any discussion, amendments, concerns?
I'm getting settled here.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Thank you. Let's check these things off so we don't do them over, do them again. Okay, citizen comments. Public members are invited to comment on any item that is not on today's agenda. So, we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes, but yes, please. To the microphone. Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak, and these are other, we are representing West Main Street. And I have a petition from 42 families on West Main Street to do something about the road. It is, these are women and men who have lived there for, I've lived there 21 years. Every time I walk on that road, I know how dangerous it is, but for when you have kids, and the number of kids that are growing on that street and wanting to use it and ride bikes on it, it's very dangerous. So, we have a petition to do something. I talked to Bruce Lord about this before, and he said, "The only thing they would do is paint." And I'm, I just hope you'll stick with that, because we could use some paint on that road. So, I have a petition, and other people would like to say something about their experiences. And I should say, my name is Dorothy Blair, I live on 632 West Main Street. And we have other members of West Main here.
Please.
My name is Amber Weewell, I live at 705 West Main Street, and I have two little kids, a nine-year-old and a five-year-old, and we love to walk and bike around Bollesburg. We walk our dog every day on Main Street, and we love to walk down to the park, walk to friends' houses, and just, yeah, the amount of speeding on the street, just every time I'm out with my kids, I'm just constantly like, getting onto them to stay on the very side or stay off in the grass. So Dorothy had talked to me about potentially a pedestrian lane on Main Street, and I think it sounds like a great idea. I'd love to kind of explore that idea and see if it's a possibility.
I'm Kate Reiber, and I live at 538 West Main Street, and I have three kids, eight, six, and six. And like Amber, we walk down to the park, we walk down and use the trails at the Bull Mansion, you know, several times a week. And it's stressful walking down that street with kids. But we love to walk down and, you know, make use of all the amenities that we have here. But it is stressful and sometimes a deterrent, so I would love to see, you know, a pedestrian lane would be awesome. Anything to help make it a little bit safer, a little bit more usable.
I'm Ken Slater, I live at 702 West Main Street. And I agree that it is kind of dangerous walking down Main Street, because I have grandkids that come with us, we babysit on for weekends a lot, and we like to go down to the, Bollesburg to the park and things. But, I mean, the one section is wide, but the rest of it's pretty narrow. There's also, I mean, if you're, if you ever walk on Main Street, you see a lot of walkers who walk up Main Street and go up Bailey Lane, so there's a lot of pedestrians. A lot of bikers also use Main Street as a shortcut to go through. I assume they're going out 322, but... So in general, I just wish there was something could be done, I'm not sure what.
And let me say, I, in doing this survey, I found out that the people who live in the developments that are on 45 cut through, and they also go onto West Main Street, and so there's quite a, it's a trail, and we don't want to discourage anybody from exercising, that is critical to their health. But if they're afraid to go out, or, you know, we really need to look at that. And once you get to the place where there is a white line by Roy Love's house on the opposite side of the street, it is just amazingly, you just sort of put your shoulders down and walk in the space. And I noticed at the top of the street, coming into West Main, you've got the perfect setup, because you, I watch the cars, and then there's a very short period of paint there that directs the cars into two lanes, and on one side of the street there is a wider place for pedestrians, which is exactly what we would like. And it's amazing to see them just go right into those lanes. And then it lasts for about 75 feet, and then it's gone. So having something like that would really work out well for us. So thank you for the opportunity, and you can see that a lot of people are interested in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
Definitely, we don't comment on stuff like this, because it's, but this, they've come this before, and we talked about this before, but it is a problem. And I think one of the things we thought was if we could contact, as I remember our last conversation, as going up Main Street, the people on the right, if they could give a right-of-way for a walking path. I think some agreed, some didn't agree. But we were talking about that, so I think while the whole, we have to have it so wide for cars. I'm not sure what the restrictions are, but I know some people, as you go up on the left, on the right, did agree to a path through their, up into their property or into the right-of-way, and some did not, but that was important. I don't know why it's never fallen up on, but it should be.
Yeah, and there's also opportunities. We've done this on the Bollesburg Pike, which is a very busy pedestrian street, also busy with cars. We actually extended the double-yellow line up the Bollesburg Pike to Kimport, where the road narrows, and that's made a lot of difference, I think that's helped. I don't know in terms of, I have to talk with the police and with our traffic engineer in terms of the traffic calming. There's a treatment we're going to try to apply on the Bollesburg Pike when we're paving it, and we could look at doing the same thing on Main Street to keep people, it's basically to keep the cars in a lane, because that slows people down visually when they see the lanes, so we can look at that. I can talk with Rob Watts as well, I'm not sure that part of West Main Street, that part of West Main Street is wide enough to accommodate a pedestrian lane, but I can certainly talk with Rob Watts about that.
What is that on our, where is that on our schedule?
It's not, yeah, not for a while. But we can look at doing something in the interim, for sure.
What was the right-of-way with that?
Part of Main Street is 60 feet, and I think that's the top part of it, and then part of it's 50 feet, and I think that's where they are. It gets very, you come around that corner, and there's a lot of room there, and then you come down, and the striping stops, and I think that's part of the problem too, because the striping stops, because the road narrows considerably through there. So I think if we could do, in the interim, some markings through there, and the police were good about Bollesburg Pike, they were the ones who, when I talked to them and said, because during the pandemic, there were so many people that were going to the Military Museum during the lockdown, and the police said, "Extend the double-yellow, that will help. If we ever got local use of radar in Pennsylvania, we could do speed details out there, that would also help, but that stalled in the State House." But that would help to do the markings to try to calm the road a little bit in the interim.
Is the narrow point where the new culvert, where that?
It's kind of maybe where it starts, it's up further, past the preserve.
I think we pursue the right-of-way thing on the side, we could, they could make a path on that side. I don't know if it cringes into, if it's on a right-of-way or infringes or not, we need to check into that.
Yeah, we need to.
Might be a private, departmentally-public type thing going on there. Okay.
I just had a question, more than that. You know, two things here I see is obviously the width of the road and the walkway, but also the speed. And I know over in LeMans, they put that, the flashing light thing up for the speeding, and it seems to help through there. I see people slowing down. Is that something we should look into that, for the speed purposes? Because obviously, we can't use radar through there.
So we've done speed up there.
I know that, but I'm talking about something permanent, that we would put one in.
Yeah, College Township owns that, so.
I know they do, that's why I'm asking.
We would have to purchase one of those, and that would be up to, we'd want to look into it. But I don't think you'd want to permanently put it there. I think there's plenty of roads that would be good candidates to have that move around.
We could try it in one.
I also don't know where, we'd have to look at the right-of-way to see where we could put it, that it wasn't getting hit by cars.
They have smaller ones that just attach to street signs.
That's the ones the police use, the one he's talking about, they blink.
I know, I realize that, but, I mean, anything.
Yeah, and we've done the speed up there, I have the data on my computer from the last time we did it.
So where, you know, normally we send things like this to the planning commissioner or somebody for heavy lifting, is this something we're going to do here? Or who do we send this to for heavy lifting?
So, this was not, this would not be something that goes to the planning commissioner, this would be something that I can talk with the traffic engineer and also with the police about.
And you're going to get back to us?
Yeah, and I'll talk with Jim Saylor at the CCMPO as well.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to bring it up at MPO this month.
He, Jim was the one who told me about the treatment we want to do on the Bollesburg Pike, so we might be able to get some money for that.
Maybe I'll, I have to be out there all day tomorrow, maybe I'll stop up and talk to him.
Anything else?
Hi, I'm Tracy Moriarty, I actually have two things, sorry.
Still only get five minutes.
They have 20, they have five.
The second one is longer. In the small area plan that you adopted, there's a line in there for Action 3.4. Support the efforts of the Bollesburg Village Conservancy and other historical and cultural organizations in seeking financial and support and technical assistance. I would like to know, is there a line item in the budget?
For the Conservancy?
For the Conservancy and other historical and cultural organizations.
Yes, we give $11,401 to the Bollesburg Heritage Museum, they get .05 mils, and the Bollesburg Village Conservancy requests every year $1,750, and that's split between Hometown Christmas and the Day in Town.
And what if there's an extra request for money?
Last year in April, we had a request from the organizers of, well, the Conservancy of Memorial Day to pay for the, help pay for the ambulance, and we paid for that, half of it.
So if there's something new that comes up, there is money available? Or is it something that you would have to put in a budget for next year?
It depends on what it is. If it's something, you know, that's large, then yes, we would have to talk about it during the budget. But if it's something that comes up during the year, you can always come and make a request to the supervisors. We're just required by Pennsylvania law to make sure that if they're going to put something in the budget, they have to vote on it at a public meeting.
Perfect. Okay, whoops, number two. It relates to the tavern property, and you, Amy, you know about this. Several years back, I believe it was in 1999, well, Amy and I have discussed some things that I would like to do with the property. And she convinced me, even though I was extremely reluctant and a little bit grumbly about it, that having a survey of the property would be a good thing to do. So I called my engineer. It has to be done anyway, so I figured, let's do it sooner rather than later. So I called my engineer, and the engineer told me that there is actually no survey on file with the county. There's no site plan on file with the county, there's absolutely nothing on file with the county. So what we would be doing is we would be putting a survey in, we'd be doing a survey, and then we would officially, we put it in, we'll log it with the county. Okay, so it would be the official survey with the county. Now my problem is, is I was told a while back that we have a site plan that I have to abide by. Well, my problem is this, if there is no survey with the county, there is no site plan with the county, how can I be beholden to a site plan that is not a site plan?
So Todd's on the Zoom.
Yes, and I just, I'm not, I'm not quite done yet with it. The site plan that I have, I reviewed it with Bob Hoffman. Bob Hoffman did the original kind of blueprints of the property way back, you know, in the 90s. And since he's an architect, he can put his stamp on that property. Again, it was not filed with the county. So then Carl took that little thing and was applying for some signage of some sort, and he came up with this thing, and he called it a site plan. And that's what was given with the application for signage in 1999, it was in March 1999, this was put in, okay? This was never signed off by the supervisors as a site plan. This was never, ever filed with the county as a site plan. Again, you need a, a survey before you have a site plan, is my understanding, according to my engineer. So my problem is, is I need not to be beholden to this, and I need you all to make a decision, you all, that I am not beholden to this, so that I can carry on and get my survey and get it properly in with the county and move forward with anything that needs to be done with the property.
So I'm going to have Todd, he unmuted himself, he can explain the site plan process to you. Also, the supervisors can't intervene in a zoning matter, and this is a...
But if this is, wait, wait. The problem is, is since it was never filed with the county...
Todd's going to explain why it wasn't filed with the county, that's not part of the process. So Todd, you can go ahead and explain the site plan process, please.
Yes, the site plan and the, and the survey are two different things. Site plans are required under certain circumstances by the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance specifically says that site plans don't have to be prepared by an engineer or a surveyor. They are basically drawn up based upon the best information that the, that the property owner has, and, and site plans are reviewed by the zoning officer and the planner, and when need be, by the township engineer for compliance with township regulations. Site plans are a much less stringent thing than, than would be a survey or would be a subdivision or land development plan. The reason why site plans don't show up in the, in the county courthouse or in county records anywhere usually is because they're not required to be reported. Likewise, they're not signed by the Board of Supervisors. They are a staff-level process. Some site plans are required to be, excuse me, reviewed by the planning commissioner and Board of Supervisors, but there's no requirement within the ordinance that either the planning commissioner or the Board of Supervisors has to sign it or approve of a, of a site plan. The, the Board of Supervisors, in, in, as Amy mentioned, in matters of zoning, don't have, really have any say in what gets approved and what doesn't get approved. So it continues to be a staff-level thing. In Tracy's particular case, she, she has wanted on a couple of occasions to do some construction, do some new construction, and one of the things that you have to show when you submit a zoning permit application is that you're in compliance with setback requirements, that you're in compliance with lot coverage and a total impervious coverage and other things within the zoning ordinance. There is no way on that property to determine those things unless we have what she described in her, in her statement. There is nothing terribly official or terribly accurate in any file or any record anywhere, so we have to have that information in order to determine compliance with the ordinance regulation.
Yes, I do understand that, and Amy and I discussed that in, in depth and in length, and so, and I understand that completely. My problem is this. So this plan, this plan drawn up by Carl was submitted for a change of use, is my understanding, and signage, it could have been more, I think it was a change of use. Was it a change of use, was it a signage? But it's a signage. So now, what Todd has told me is because this is a site plan for a sign, okay? That I have to have, he's told me before, that I have to maintain this parking lot or 17 to 20 places on my property. Well, I guess I don't understand that, because if I build onto the brick building, I have, I have to have the required number of spots for that extension on that building, for the certain number, the uses, et cetera, et cetera, right? But still, even with that, you know, we've got the pervious and impervious surface issues still coming up on the property. My problem is, is that I don't know why I'm beholden to something when this was turned in for a sign issue, why it was done to begin with, and why it was even required, and why on earth I would be beholden to this. And I think that there needs to be a decision made, if this is a staff-level thing and there's no survey, nothing, nothing at all on file, except I'm supposed to be beholden to this. Which I, there's got to be something that can be done about this. Because you either need to review it, review this, because I can't have somebody just turning around and saying, "Well, you need a site plan," and I say you need a site plan, and this is why you need a site plan, and now owner four people down, now you're beholden to this site plan that came up 20, 30 years ago.
Todd.
So this is where I'm stuck.
Todd, is there any way that we could have, if Tracy does the survey and puts in a site plan, we could then have that supersede the site plan that Carl did way back when, and that would be the baseline moving forward?
If a survey is done and a new site plan submitted, we'll certainly review it for compliance with the township regulations as they exist today. And if it meets the township regulations as they exist today, I would imagine it would be approved, and that would be the official site plan of record. But absent that occurring, there's nothing that can supersede the site plan that's in the file, that's on record, is having been approved by someone, I think that was in the 80s or 90s, I think it was before me, but I'm not 100% sure.
I think it was 99, I think it was you, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I, I think the original drawing, though, that, that was based upon, was prepared by Carl Hacker before I started working here, and I think that was copied and used with, for the change of use application that was submitted in 99 or whatever it was. So what, you know, what was done in 99 was based upon something that Carl either did or had done for him prior to 1994.
Okay, so the other issue that comes about is that, now, this puts me in the position of if I come up with a new site plan and it has to be in accordance to the ordinances right now, what does that do to my parking? Because of...
It doesn't do anything to your parking, because there's a section in the zoning ordinance, which we've discussed, that says if, if, if you fail to meet the, the requirement for parking at any point, and, and you previously failed to meet the requirement for parking, you can't get rid of any of those parking spaces, they have to remain. That's why that site plan, that's one of the reasons why that site plan you're talking about is important, because someone, whether it was Bob Hoffman or Carl Hacker or whoever, formalized, went on record at that time as saying that the parking lot was large enough to have 17 to 20 spaces. That's a historic record now, and, and that's, you know, to me, that's the minimum number of parking spaces that you're required to have on that site. Obviously, with the modern regulations, you'd be required to have many more, so...
Why?
That ordinance section, that ordinance section that I referred to earlier prevents you from reducing the parking below that 17 to 20 spaces on the existing site plan.
That's like saying I can't reduce my building. That's like saying I can't take down that cottage. That's like saying I can't rip down that brick building. Why can I rip down the brick building, rip down the cottage, destroy the tavern, but I can't get rid of a parking lot? It makes no sense to me. Just because somebody wanted, just because somebody wanted to put in a sign in 1999.
It might have been change of use, I don't remember.
It could have been either, but it doesn't matter, because there was no parking issue then, it was nothing. I thought that this all was because this was grandfathered in, because we had more parking than we were allowed to have.
I thought we were changing our parking ordinance, we're working on that.
Well, we're working on it, but this is something that's going to take like, two years to complete.
Oh, it's been a while.
And, or three years, and this is something that's more pertinent to me at this point in moving forward with this property. And I don't understand, again, why I'm beholden to something and why I can't change something. If I can change a building, why can't I change a parking lot? This building is right here, if I can make this building bigger, why can't I make this smaller?
What's the process, there is a, there is a, I know that Todd has his rules he has to follow, there's no doubt about that, but there's a process for everything. What is the process to go through this?
That's what I'm asking.
She can go through the zoning hearing board if she wants to seek a variance.
Well, other than that, there's got to be a way that you can...
What variance would I need for the removal of a building? If I wanted to remove a building, or a removal of a parking lot? If I wanted to remove a parking lot?
Honestly, Tracy, the best thing you could do is to get the survey and put in another site plan, and then we can sit down and talk. And we can, once we know what's on the site, once we know what the impervious coverage issues are, once we know what the parking conditions are, and then we can have a conversation. And then we can see if there's any kind of relief that we can direct you to. But right now, we have a site plan from the night, from 1999, and we have...
It was never submitted, though?
It was submitted to us, and it was approved by Todd, which is the process that's in our ordinance.
Well, then we need to change the ordinance.
We don't need to change the ordinance, because the ordinance has worked. So I think what you should...
Obviously not.
For one property owner, you think that it hasn't worked. We haven't had any other complaints about the site plan issue at all. So I think what we need to do is you need to think about getting that survey, like we discussed, and then let's sit down and have a conversation. You're probably going to fall within that overlay district that we're looking at doing.
But that's three years from now.
It might not be three years from now, it might be six months from now, it might be a year from now, you don't know.
It can be next month, if you want it to be.
Yeah, you don't know. So let's, it's going to take you a while to get the survey anyway, so let's get the survey done.
All right, and I just want to, I would like an answer, though, about, honestly, I would like an answer, why can I get rid of a building, but not a parking lot? I think that's a valid question, a valid question. I can take down any building, but I can't get rid of my parking lot. And I'd like that answered, honestly and openly, I think that's something that really needs to be considered. But also, I thank you, and yes, I will get the survey, and we'll move forward from here, but I need some, I need some relief on this.
Well, let's talk once you get that survey done.
Okay, thank you.
A comment about downtown. Downtown Bollesburg is illegal. You could not build another Bollesburg village, according to our ordinances. You can't even come close to it. And that's, that is kind of something we should...
Well, my house.
Yes, well, that's every, that's every place, and I think we need to look at something like that, yes.
And that's the idea with the overlay district, honestly.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. New agenda items. So the state prohibits, prohibits us from popping something new on the agenda halfway through the meeting, after some people may have left. So if anybody feels anything that we ought to add to the agenda at this time, now is the time to bring it up. Okay, thank you. So, on the township business, we are having a presentation from Maya Nebraskafsky about the State College, I'm sorry, the Schlo Center Region Library and its impacts. So, please.
Thank you so much. So, I'm Maya Nebraskafsky, and this is Grace Myersmith, as well as Mathis Miller Pretty.
Can you take, can you take your mask off, we can hear you?
Um, I don't feel comfortable taking my mask off, but I can...
Get the mic up there. There you go, keep it going.
Is this, is this any better?
Maybe you could just talk a little bit louder.
Okay, so, I'm Maya Nebraskafsky, and this is Grace Myersmith, as well as Mathis Miller Pretty. So Grace and I are residents of Harris Township and high school students in State College Area High School. We are members of the School Library Foundation Advocacy Committee, and we wanted to talk with you all today about what the library has been up to, as well as what the library means to us as students. Additionally, today, this is taking place of the library report from the Harris Township trustee. So first, I want to thank you all for your continued support of School Library. This township has been a huge help in ensuring the library maintains support and funding within the broader community, and I cannot tell you how much that means to me, the library, and all those who benefit from it, especially in this county. So when I was younger, the library was a safe and quiet space for me to spend my time with parents before other activities downtown. I'd come to the library and do the crafts that were set up with my mom and check out books afterwards. Or I'd go upstairs with my dad, where he'd teach me to play chess on absurdly nice chess boards with sculpted figurines for pieces made by a local artist I knew. As students that frequently access the library, we gain so many benefits from a library that prioritizes outreach and community engagement. The library is not only a great bank of resources to utilize for school and recreational purposes, but also a safe space downtown and a place to study, meet with friends, and more broadly, connect with others. The support of the library means a supported community. So we have passed out an update list from the library, put together by Lisa, the director, and I'm not going to read the whole thing out, but I just wanted to highlight the Frost Fest at School Library that's going to be open to families starting soon. That's a great place for children and parents to hang out and just have a good time with other families who also really enjoy the library and what it offers. So feel free to look over that, and then thank you for their, for your time, and if you have any questions for any of us, please let us know.
Anybody?
Yeah, I do.
Whatever, she's fine. It's a credibility issue now, she lives in Lethal.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
How are your parents doing?
They're good, they're really good.
Good.
Next item on our agenda is the official map update.
So over the past several months, there has been an official map subcommittee... So over the past several months, there has been an official map subcommittee has met regularly to help prepare a new official map for consideration by the board. The subcommittee was comprised of several members of both the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We used to have an official map back there on the wall behind you, but we don't any longer. But I want to give you a reminder as to what the official map is. It is something that is defined by the municipality's planning code as allowing municipalities to basically show and designate where the township may want to see future public improvements, like streets, parks, bicycle pedestrian facilities, things of that nature. By showing these on an official map, the municipality is basically announcing its intent to try to acquire that land for those municipal improvements. It's not an official street map, or zoning map, or a form of eminent domain, it is simply a map to notify the community and future developers and that of interest that the township has to install future public facilities. The current official map that was included in your agenda tonight was adopted back in 2008, and includes a number of facilities that have been completed, as well as some that may not be feasible or desirable in the future. So the Planning Commission, or I'm sorry, the official map subcommittee met together with a goal of preparing an official map that did not constitute a wish list, but rather a map that would be feasible to implement. So back earlier this year, the subcommittee held, or put together several online tools to collect input from the public. So these input tools were used to collect information from residents on their types of behaviors related to walking, biking, wheeling, and other activities here in the township, as well as locations where they would like to see connections provided, so places they'd like to get from and to. And we learned a lot of information, we had over 150 responses, the vast majority of which were township residents. And folks were really generous in providing a lot of information about where they walk and/or bike, and the types of facilities they'd like to see. So what was included in your agenda tonight is a draft official map that shows where the subcommittee identified future facilities that should be considered by the township. There's two parks on there that were from the existing official map, as well as two areas along Bull Avenue that have been identified as pedestrian improvements, as well as two potential public parking lots here in the village. Unlike the current official map, this map does include a legend at the bottom, so you're able to see what all the facilities are, and where they're intended to go from and to, and what they're intended to include. So the request tonight is for the board to review the proposed official map and provide any feedback to staff. If you're satisfied with this map as proposed, the board should direct staff to forward the proposed map to the Center Regional Planning Commission, the County Planning Agency, and adjacent municipalities for review as required by the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code. And the MPC does require a comment period for official maps of 45 days, so the earliest the Board of Supervisors will be able to hold a public hearing to consider adopting this will be sometime in January. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
That's two, Mark.
Yes.
The number four parking lot.
Yes.
Can you eyeball that in terms of what, where you're thinking? I assume number three is the municipal building one.
Yes.
That's the, that's the parking lot across the alley behind us.
Way on the alley.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the one that we used to use.
Second observation, number 19.
Okay.
The Aston Heights, Kaywood neighborhood, connection to Oak Hall Park.
I think you may be looking at the old map.
You're looking at the old map. The purple sheet is the old map.
This is the legend of the old map.
The new map. This is the new map. The white is the new map. The white one's the new map with the legends on the bottom.
I was schooled also on that.
Is that connection on the new map?
That is not on the new map. That was not one that was identified by the committee as being feasible moving forward. And it wasn't one that we actually had a lot of feedback from folks. Folks really seem like they want to get from the neighborhoods down to the village, understanding that once you get here, you have connectivity to go elsewhere throughout the center region. But that seemed to be the majority, is either here or out to Bear Meadows area.
I'm surprised with all the activity in Oak Hall Park, that the Willa Brook, Kaywood neighborhoods wouldn't want a connection from the far end of Kaywood North over to Oak Hall Park, of the Harris Township parcel, that five acres that we own up in Oak Hall Park?
Yeah, like I said, we didn't get a lot of feedback in the, in the survey indicating that. I think also there was that concern, too, about what's the feasibility of the township acquiring that right-of-way, or requiring that type of facility in the future? Is that, is that kind of a wish list item, or is it one that might be feasible for the township to complete?
It would have to be on the private property side. You can't get it right-of-way from Bendout to put a bike.
Right, right.
But then it would have to be dealing with that property.
Which makes it more challenging when you have to get that much, you know, right-of-way from private property owners, because it's a pretty lengthy distance with a couple property owners in between.
Is that an Everhart property?
I think Everhart, and I think Meyer owns the other one.
Please hit number six. Main Street pedestrian improvement is on there?
Yeah, that's to get from Stan Yoder Preserve over to Blue Spring Park. I would suggest that maybe we also expand that a bit, based on the concerns that we heard this evening from the residents on West Main Street, so that, you know, we can do things in the interim, but we have that long-term goal of a pedestrian access further up West Main Street.
Hope that the 17 that are gone here, none of them are shared use facilities. And it's basically bicycle lanes or pedestrian?
Yeah, for the most part, this would be bicycle pedestrian facilities where possible. Obviously, in some cases, it may be, you know, just bike signage or a bike lane alongside the road, but we had a lot of feedback in the, in the surveys where folks talk about walking around their neighborhood, where they actually, I had like 150 different responses where people explained exactly where they walk. It was very comprehensive, but a lot of folks were saying they want to be able to get out of their neighborhood and go elsewhere. They want to be able to get down to the village, they want to be able to get out to Rothrock, you know, Bear Meadows area, things like that.
I have a question.
Where's our traffic study at for out here?
The need study?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, Rob's still working on that. He said it'll probably be the first quarter of next year when it's completed.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, we just had a very nasty accident out there again, and part of all this was, you know, this walk corridor through Bull Avenue, and, you know, slowing it down.
What, you're talking about the last accident? That was at the intersection?
I understand that, but I'm just saying that we've had two now, within a year, that were very bad accidents there, but it's part of that study, is trying to calm that through there, and that's the key to the interconnectivity, you know? If we don't, if we can't get people across that road safely, in these, a feasible amount of time, and all we're doing on, we're going to have two sections, we're going to have one on one side of the road, one on the other side of the road.
So we do, on the official map, have intersection improvements at Bull Avenue and Warner, and at the Military Museum, which we're hoping to hear about that grant that we applied for soon. And then we also have a Bull Avenue shared use facility also shown on there.
I saw that, too. Where do we put it?
Which will help bolster us when we do get the need study done, when we go to apply for funding, we'll be able to point to, look, this has been identified as a priority of the township, it's on the official map.
And didn't we, didn't we, when we took out the trees down there, Country Place, didn't we talk about a path going through there? What happened to that? Is that then feasible?
It is not feasible, because the right-of-way changes through there, so it's really wide in certain sections, and then it's, the open space is really narrow, so it's very hard to put in a path that would accommodate through there.
We have water wing, we can hang water wings out, go through the path.
There's long water.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we have two park expansions, we have two public parking facilities, and then we have pedestrian crossings and shared use. Basically, it seems to me all, the goal of identifying things that are doable has been accomplished.
Well, expansion of Kaywood Park is underway, right?
We have the two acres, yes. This would hopefully expand it the other way towards Rocky Ridge.
Yes, please.
Diane Farr. Just a gentle reminder, we had a person at the last Board of Supervisors speak about the parking lot that you identified as right across from here, the grassy area, and she said that when that was attempted to be sold by Mr. Rocky, who owned it, that it was deemed too swampy to do anything with. So therefore, it was sold to the township. So I think that when you're looking at your plans for where our parking is, that consideration needs to be investigated. Okay?
Just before my time, I don't know.
That wasn't from Mr. Rocky.
That wasn't from Rocky.
That wasn't Mr. Rocky.
That wasn't from Rocky.
No.
Mr. Rocky, he went to the trailer.
But, well, we bought it, we bought it. No, the township bought it regardless of who we bought it from, I don't remember who we bought it from. Don't remember who we bought that from.
Does the green route, Transylvania Green Route fit into this at all? Because it follows the Linden Hall Road into Rock Hill Road, Brush Valley. Does that fit into any of this people movement?
Yeah, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but.
I couldn't find.
It's on there, Bicycle PA Route G, it does show it going the whole way out along, yeah, Brush, you know, Linden Hall and Brush Valley Road on the east side of the township, and then coming down Warner Boulevard and going out 45 towards Shingle Town. It is on there, it might be a little difficult with the resolution of the map when it was printed, but it's definitely on there.
You need to extend it then to the College Line, through the double turn at the Hopkins property.
Okay.
That's a heavily used, heavily used road.
Yeah, it is, Danny, it is to the College Line now.
But it's not on my map, so, okay, fine. It's a heavily used bicycle path, early in the morning. Every time coming home, groups of 20, 25 bikes at a time.
First, I'd like to comment that this, the first map we had had 30, 30-some tasks on there, which were way out of feasibility, and we, down to 17, which makes more sense. And we can work on those 17, then look at the rest if we have to. But I'd like to make that motion, that according to this, we, okay, direct staff to forward the purpose of the CRPC, Centennial Planning Agency, and adjacent municipalities for review, and schedule a public hearing, and also add the, where do you want it, the main, West Main Street project added to that?
Main Street pedestrian way.
Main Street pedestrian way, yeah, I guess we could say it that. And for possible adoption as soon as possible. About 45 days, I guess, okay. That's my way. If I understood it, I made it.
Further thoughts? From the public? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Hawk Bridge Phase Two Concept Plan. Mr. Songer.
Tell me what you want me to pull up first, so I can share my screen.
They have that in their packets already.
Good evening, my name's Tom Songer, and I'm here to meet with you relative to Hawk Bridge, what I'm calling Phase Two. This would be the remainder of the lands that we have to develop. You might be aware of the fact that we have completed Emma Court through to Academy Street. We haven't put the final wearing course on that road yet, we'll be doing that next year. We usually do that after we get a number of homes built, and currently, there are three homes under construction. We've sold a total of seven lots, this was all outlined in the memo that I gave to Amy, and I'm sure you have in your packet. You might recall this land, before we started to develop it, was overgrown with invasive species. We've mowed all that down, for the most part, opened the land up, and looks much, much better than it did when we first purchased the land, which was four years ago, this past month is when we purchased the land. And we really couldn't do much, because we were waiting on the new zoning ordinance to be passed, and that just got passed here this last spring, almost four years after we bought the property. You might recall, there was an old farmhouse on the property, that one of the former owners lived there. The house was in a state of disrepair, and was really, made more sense to take it down than try to save it. So I contracted with a local Amish contractor who took it down, recycled most of the materials. Cost a significant amount of money to do that, much more than it would have been just to raise the house and take it to the landfill, but I thought the right thing to do was try to recycle it if I could. But before we did that, we allowed the Wollesburg Fire Department to use it as a training exercise, and that worked out, that worked out quite well. So let's talk about the plans. So Amy, if you could bring up the aerial video. We had a drone flight over the entire site, and I might ask you to stop it periodically. Okay, just hold it right there for a moment, so I get everybody oriented. So this is, basically, down here is where Emma Court comes out. This is the area that we mowed the invasive species on, and our land goes up, actually, to about here. Our land is not on the steep part of Tussie, okay? This land in the past was agricultural land, it was farmed, it's not very good soils there, but it was farmland. Here is Springfield Commons, Brisbane Way, which is a private street. Here's some of the homes in Springfield Commons, which we also developed, have a total of 64 lots in Springfield Commons, primarily single-family homes, but we do have some duplexes. So we're looking to the east here, towards Harvest Fields. So this is all our land over to Tory Lane, which runs up through this area here, okay? Okay, Amy, please forward. So this is the aerial view, again, this is our land here. This is Tussie Mount, we don't own that. Here again, looking at Springfield Commons. So hold it there, Amy, please. So this is Springfield Commons, Brisbane Way, I just showed you. This is our land right here, that goes out to Tory Lane. So here's adjacent neighborhoods, there's some multifamily units in this area, and then you go into single-family homes. This is the backside of the Gates Development, which is a combination of townhomes and some duplexes. This is looking over towards Harvest Fields. Okay, Amy? Again, Springfield. This is adjacent neighborhood, single-family homes, R1 Development. Can hold it there, Amy, please. This is the Gates Development, this has been built within the last eight to 10 years. It's sold out very, very quickly. As a matter of fact, some residents who lived here are moving over to our Hawk Ridge Development. Here's the tower next to Tory Lane that runs over in this area. Springfield Commons over here. And coming this way is Harvest Fields, okay, Amy? Here are the ponds next to Harvest Fields, I think the township has a park right in that general area. Here again is Brisbane, where Springfield Commons ends. Here's, hold it one second, Amy, please. Here's homes under construction in Harvest Fields, or Hawk Ridge. Over here is Emma Court going to Academy Street. Academy Street runs up. Academy Street runs up to the south in this area. This is the land we mowed the invasive species, but we kept all the evergreen trees or deciduous trees. There's trees in here that don't have leaves on. Those are ash trees that were impacted by the Emerald Ash Bore. Those will have to be taken down when we develop this, this area here. Tory Lane is over in this area. Okay, Amy? Here again Tory Lane right here, coming up the hill.
Where's the water company tower?
The left?
It's to the left up here. Here's the tower. You'll see the water tower here in a second.
Okay.
There's the water tower.
Is the property from the Gates?
Here's the pond.
That's Harvest Field property, right?
Right. Hold it there one second, Amy, please. So, number of years ago, Amy and I and others met and talked about trying to get a hike bike way over to Harvest Fields and then on to Tussie. So that, and we actually went out and walked this old AT&amp;T line that runs through the Harvest Fields lands and over to Tussie. But we weren't able to secure some right of ways there at that time, but it still is something I would like to work with the township on to see if there isn't a way that we could get a hike bike way. And the Harvest Fields people were very cooperative and they would, they would participate. And I think your parkland is in this area, Amy?
It's a pond right there.
Okay. So it'd be a nice feature to have a hike bike way that goes from Tory Lane over to Tussie, which I guess just sold. Is everybody aware of that? Sold. And that would then ultimately tie in with the hike bike way that we built around Springfield Commons, which a lot of people use that for walking, pushing, walking their children and pushing baby carriages, riding bikes, what, what have you. Okay, Amy? This is coming on to the Harvest Fields lands now. And this is back to our land in this area here and over. Okay. So the second page of what I handed out to you is an illustration of nearby lands and we'll talk more about that as we get into the presentation. So Amy, if you want to bring up the other plans that we submitted, maybe John, I have my engineer here. John, do you want to give just a brief summary of the yield plan and the as-is plan? So this is essentially the as-is plan, right?
That's the yield plan.
Yield plan there.
Do we have that?
Yes, I'm John Sepp from Penn State Engineering. Under the conservation design requirements, which is the new ordinances that you folks adopted last year, you determine the density of a project based on how many one and a half acre lots you could fit on the site. And that's exactly what we did here. We, we came up with 14 lots and then you multiply that times 1.1, which allows us to have 15 lots on, on the 32 acre site. There is a 14.87 acre lot on the west side of this tract that is being subdivided off and sold as part of this project that is not included in the development. The conservation design allows for up to three exempt lots, given the size of this tract, to subdivide off without having to meet the open space requirement. So we're allowed to have 15 acre, 15 lots on the 32 acres and I guess we can go to the proposed layout, please? Yes. Yes. So what we have shown here are lots about a half acre in size. This is called a density bonus option of your ordinance and it requires 70% open space, which comes to 22 acres on this track. And the way you determine open space is you set aside areas of wetlands, streams, wooded areas and steep slopes. Those go into the open space. Then there's buffers around them and you use the rest of the area to develop the land, which we have shown here as 15 half, plus or minus half acre lots ranging in size from a little under half acre up to three quarters of an acre, which will act as a cul-de-sac coming off of Tory Lane. And that's pretty much the layout. The open space pretty much surrounds all the lots. It, it is one contiguous tract and this is pretty much how your ordinance evolves into a subdivision plan.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Do you have the colored illustrations that next, Amy? Okay, so this adds a little color to it. So if you want to pan down a little bit to the top so we can see the top here. Okay. So, so this is what we're calling Phase One of the development. As I said earlier, Emma Court has been built through from Springfield Commons. This is Springfield Commons line here. And right here is a zoning line between R1 and this ag zone, which we're going to talk about here. So currently, as I said, the infrastructure's in. We're going to put the final course of paving down and finish off at that bay. That'll all be done hopefully next year, but as again, we don't want to put the wearing course down before we get a lot of the heavy construction completed as far as that goes. So here's the plan that John talked about. So if you want to pan up there a little bit, Amy. So just, okay, hold it. So just so everyone knows, what is in the Phase One lot includes this area here. This is a separate deed. There are three separate deeds on this parcel when I bought it. This tract over here I owned for a number of years, about nine acres. There's about eight plus acres remaining to be developed in what we'll call Phase One. And then this is about almost 15 acres here. Obviously, to develop this, we'd have to consolidate these lots and then create the lots that we want to have as part of our Phase Two development. So all the intermittent streams, wetlands are over in this area. We're not touching any of those. We're going to keep that all as, as is, basically. So the, these lots that are shown here, this is, has been approved for public sewer service and the sewer exists right along Tory Lane. All the lots that we've developed to date in Phase One have public sewer service. Technically, these lots, which would be five lots plus the estate lot, which you're allowed to build on, one, one home, are outside the regional growth boundary. Okay? So we know the process you have to go through. Basically, COG ultimately has to approve any changes to the regional growth boundary and as I understand it, it has to be five out of six municipalities ultimately approve it. But before we get to that, we have to have your approval or there's no sense going ahead. All this is going to be served with public water. Water line's right out here and so it's a long process to get it approved for sewer. Costs, what do it cost for consultant fees, et cetera? But that's what we're talking about is six lots that would be on public sewage. And when you, when you have sewage here and you have it over here and you have it right here, that's why, one of the questions I have. I don't know if you want to discuss that tonight or whatever, but ultimately, that's, that's the issue.
Excuse me. Do those lots perk? Have you done perk testing?
Well, I had them tested here again. You know, if, if the previous owners had done this development probably even three years ago, they'd have been fine. But DEP has changed the regs now with on-lot sewage. I went up there and I did log pits with your sewage enforcement officer and technically she didn't find any areas that passed years ago.
Found none, none that passed?
None.
None?
None that passed. And Mary Kay Lepton, she's, she did a nice job, but I think she would put that in writing to you. That, that, so that's, that's where, where that stands. And we all know, just to give some update on the regional growth boundary, I think that started in 2006. It happened at a time when we thought UAJA was going to run out of sewer capacity because the sewer capacity was only six million gallons a day. Today, it's over 10 million gallons a day thanks to beneficial reuse. There's no sewer capacity problem and these six lots would probably generate about 780 gallons of sewage per day. That's what, that's what we're talking about. And the reason that is, is because under the statewide building code, you have to have water conservation devices in your home and the average new home built in the center region based on water use information from the water authorities, about 130 gallons a day. So it's not very much sewage. It's available, but technically this is outside the regional growth boundary. Since there is plenty of capacity in the UAJA system, I mean, I just have to ask, what, do we really need a regional growth boundary? Because there is capacity now, but there wasn't in 2006.
My name is Martin McGann and since Mr. Sauger is talking about the subject, I'd like to just point it by two cents. I'm on a committee that's looking at source water protection with COG and the one thing that we've been discussing is how to reduce the number of septic, septic fields in the center region and get as much water into pipes to go to the sewage treatment plant because that's the way that we can control the water quality better than if we have septic fields on private property. Because even though those are inspected periodically, they aren't inspected nearly often enough to prevent any kind of leachate or whatever to get into the groundwater. The other comment I'd make now is that years ago in a different life, I worked with an engineering company here in town and we saw how that regional growth boundary doesn't seem to make sense sometimes. Yes, it's not something that you control, but it is something that puts obstacles in the place of good planning as far as the source water is concerned. It encourages septic fields where there shouldn't be septic fields because it's very easy to pipe the affluent to the plant. So that's the only thing I want to, I want to mention this evening. Thank you.
The main, the majority of that always run into solar and the cost of running the, the mains.
Over, over great distances, I would, I would agree with you, but in this case, the, if Mr. Sauger is correct, which I believe he is, the sewer line's going to come up to here.
Yeah.
So it really isn't that much of a cost for the developer to do that. Thank you.
Might also mention that Martin and his wife, Lee, are going to be living in our Springfield, or Hawk Ridge Development Phase, Phase One going forward. But anyway, that, that's a question that we have to ask ourselves. I really don't want to go through submitting applications and plans and consultant reports if you don't have any interest in, in approving this for public sewage. It's, doesn't make any sense for me to, to go through all that. So it all starts here with you, with you gentlemen. If you have any questions, I mean, as a registered professional engineer myself, having owned a consulting engineering firm for many years in the State College area, I've always been encouraged to design projects and tie onto the public utilities whenever they're readily available and of course have to have capacity. And putting in septic systems when sewer's this close, to me, makes no sense. But that's your call and we have to abide by, by your decision.
What's the sequence now of this moving through the, our planning commission, CRPC, the public sewer expansion system? Talk about that a little bit, Wade.
Yeah, so the development of regional impact process starts here at the board and if you are interested in considering an expansion to the regional growth boundary and sewer service area in line with what Mr. Sauger is proposing, you would then need to let Mr. Sauger know to go back and put together a development of regional impact application. It doesn't mean that you support the application. It just means that you are interested in seeing what information he brings forward with the proposal, what the impacts are, things of that nature. You can send it to the planning commission for review and then ultimately though, the board would have to make a decision of whether or not you support Mr. Sauger's request before it goes to the regional level. There's something else to keep in mind here is that the 2013 implementation agreement that was adopted by all six center region municipalities does require a development agreement between the host municipality and the developer, basically guaranteeing that the project that is being proposed for the sewer expansion will be developed. So that's another kind of factor in this that wasn't around the last time you had a DRI come through, but it would be beneficial to have, you know, a, a land development plan, a subdivision plan submitted so that at least your staff has time to look at it and say what the applicant would like to do related to their public sewer request is going to be compliant with the township's ordinances. Because the last thing you'd want to do is get to the regional level, get an approval and then find that whatever the plan was wouldn't work.
Is that a guarantee of a big G or little g?
I would say a smaller G, perhaps midsize G, depending upon the level of review. It'd be nice to have, it would be nice if it was to the point where we could say if, if that's how far this goes through the process that, you know, Mr. Sauger's plan for development is compliant with the condition that public sewer be provided. You know, something like that would be preferable, I think, for the township, primarily so as the board, you know you're making an informed decision. But once you have made that decision to support or not support, if you do support the request, it would go to the Center Regional Planning Commission and then on to the General Forum for Action where, as Mr. Sauger said, five out of six municipalities need to vote in favor.
That's the medium size G.
And he would have to enter into a development agreement, correct?
Yeah, the development agreement is required with the host municipality basically after the approval, but it wouldn't be considered formal until that development agreement was entered into. And then there's a requirement that a building permit be pulled for the project within five years of, of that expansion.
Yeah, five years to complete it out. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So thank you, Josh.
Sure, I'll, I'll talk to this. First off, Mr. Sepp, Tom, first running our new conservation design, I think it came out very well. I liked your, the way you went through everything and that was my understanding on how the process would go. Second, I'm, I'm big on the environment and, and the one thing is we talk about solar energy and greenhouse gases all the time. This is, this is protecting the water sources and doing it the most efficient way. Sewer is much more environmentally friendly than putting septic tanks in. And look where we're at. We're on the top of the hill. Everything runs downhill. So if we have a septic tank that fails up there, guess where it's going? Downhill. So as far as that goes, I don't believe, I, I think as a center region, when we put the growth boundary and the... we put the growth boundary and the sewer boundaries together, there was a reason for that at that point. If you look at it today, we sure have gone outside the growth boundary with a lot of growth in the center region. Uh, and, and the answer to Mr. McGann's, uh, comment, uh, if a developer wants to run sewer line 10 miles and pay for it, that's his pro, he wants to do it. I have no problem allowing him have sewer service. So I will go on record here tonight that I would support, uh, running sewer service to all those lots. I think if you look at the, the sewer boundary on this, this map here, the yellow line, look, it's, it's going boom, 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 you know? So, so like I said, as far as I'm concerned, I think we proceed with it. And if we can get sewer here, I think we try to get it the best we can. That's, that's kind of where I'm at and I would vote for, uh, sending it forward to, to go through the process.
Oh, thanks.
No problem.
Well, uh, our first question is, I, I think my question was answered. That, it's, it's already zoned ag outside of the region. That, okay, that was my que, I wasn't sure if it was.
This new ordinance though, that you have, it's like an overlay ordinance, right John? Within the ag zone? The, the. I mean, there's different options for one.
It's a design option within the ag zone. Under the ag zone, you have different ways of developing, uh, depending on, it's, it's a function of how many lots you have, the size of the lots and the open space. I think there's four or five, five different options.
They can develop on ag. We have, we have, we have a mechanism to develop on ag.
Yeah, that's, that's in your new zoning ordinance you passed this past spring. And here again, I think you're all aware, but I, this is nine acres that I've owned for probably 20 years.
How many, you put three different, you were going to have three different things on there at one time.
Well, when, when I originally, I mean, I, I think some of you are aware, but when I originally bought this, I wanted this to be in the sewer service area. And when you went through that process in 2006.
We approved it, yes.
I don't want to bring up maybe old memories, but this land and this land, the people that owned it applied to be included in the sewer service area. And at one point, the supervisors approved it, but then they pulled it back when it got to the center region. I found out later then that because the sewer was here, this property had been assessed by the sewer authority back in like 1968. So because this property had been assessed for sewer service, that's how I got the right to have this served.
Was already, yes.
And the sewer runs up Tory Lane and there's properties beyond my property that are on public sewage. So based on your current ordinance, uh, we're simply asking that these five lots, I'm assuming I could get one of five served with public sewage since the majority of it's in the sewer service area. But we're asking that these five lots and somebody's may build a house up in here one day, that those six lots be served with public sewage.
What about the one exempt lot?
He, uh, that gentleman went through and got his permit for a, a special, basically spare, spray irrigation system. But he would like to be able to get on the sewer, which is a couple hundred feet away. The other thing, just so you know, there are four homes to the south here that are all on septic. And I believe one or two of them actually has a sewage treatment plant with a discharge. So if something went wrong with one of those systems, those people might be here petitioning to be able to tie on to the public sewer, which you can do that utilizing a grinder pump with a small force main. You do not have to build eight inch mains and deep sewers and manholes. And, uh, just to make you aware of it, we did, when I did the engineering on Hunt Ridge Manor, which is next to the former Elks Club over 20 years ago, that's the way we served that entire development was with grinder pumps. So when you get into bigger lots in rural areas, grinder pumps are a viable way to provide public sewer service. But this gentleman, this gentleman here, Dr. Spencer, who lives on Academy Street, got a permit through Mary Kay Lupton, uh, in accordance with DEP standards for an on lot system.
Is that, is that the area that was being considered for, for long-term care facility?
No, it was actually, it was actually in here.
That's when he was going through the DRI. It was for Benjamin, it was for a personal care facility.
Yeah, yeah.
Which became the Wynwood House.
I remember that discussion.
We, yeah, we had a party that was interested in doing a personal care facility in this general area. And, uh, that didn't, that didn't materialize. And now you're not allowed to do that in the, based on your current zoning anyway.
I've got lots, lots to go. Well, uh, I guess I'm not exactly the geologist like anybody, right? Like that. But I am not on one side of the other, the public sewer or septic. I'm not on one side of the other. I'm not sure that, that we, it's so important that we have everybody on sewer system. I'm not totally convinced that that, that is overriding reason to do certain things. Uh, basically you want to expand Benjamin Heights. That's, I guess that's what we're talking about. Took me a while to figure that out. But you want, that's the Benjamin Heights. You want to expand that to additional five lots out there.
Now this, but just so you understand, all this land is being developed in accordance with the current zoning ordinance. Okay? When we initially brought in Benjamin Heights, and I did a preliminary plan on this and it was approved, when we thought it had to have on lot sewage. We only got, I think, five or six lots at that time. Okay?
Ten.
So we never brought a plan in for Benjamin Heights with public sewer.
You bought, you bought a concept or designed it. You had a concept of what it was going to be. It was 10, 10 buildings or something like this and a main building.
Yeah.
But that was just a concept. That was not.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me go through all this and then you can argue that, but, um, this, I, I, expanding our groups, our, 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 our growth boundary isn't as simple as, well, yeah, we could just add five more lots on there. It makes sense. Put them on sewer versus sewer. And like I said, I'm torn either way on that. I'm not completely convinced that, that hooking everybody to sewer and sending it then water to Chesapeake is good for us, good for us right here. I'm not convinced of that. Now we have beneficial reuse, which brings some water back to us. We're going to permit for so much of that. How these permits are going to go down the line, I have, nobody seems to know. But I do know that, that whenever we, and I'm speaking from experience, not, not, not actual scientific knowledge, but when the sewer went through our station, our water table dropped to about 10 feet. I know because nobody's basements got flooded anymore. So, so that took, that took water, that took our water table away. Not that it hurt us. We still have lots of water, but that was, that was a concern. So I'm not, uh, just saying, okay, the, the reason there is a regional growth boundary is I understand it. Part of it is there's still many, many acres inside that growth boundary to be developed. The last time I heard, it was around 5,000 acres can be developed inside the regional growth boundary. And I believe that was one of the impetus for putting a regional growth boundary out. And most of it was where our land ends. And farmers began. That's basically where ours was. Where farmers would come in and, and, and that, that just made sense. Now, how many of those 5,000 acres are still there? How many are billable? I don't know. But I remember the Penn State professor, I think he was a professor, did a very good presentation a number of years ago on sprawl. And, and where I'm getting to is, it probably doesn't mean much of this little four lots here, but overall the sprawl and regional growth boundaries are important. And sprawl is, is, is dangerous, not dangerous, but if you look at certain cities and all of a sudden they're this way, a lot of wasted land, a lot of wasted everything. The value of it was to develop what we have now and work our way out. And as needed be, change our regional growth boundary. Change it because it made sense to change it, not because we needed to add three more, five more lots to the development. So there's something we have to think about. I'm not going one way or the other. I'm just, I'm just bloviating right now. So I'm concerned that, that we say, okay, we're going to, we're going to change everybody. We appreciate changing our regional growth boundary. I'm not sure whether, I know about five or six years ago, we were, we were asked, we, we did a study. And is there any reason to change our regional growth boundary? Nobody asked us to change it. I think Tom made, made that comment. Nobody asked us to change it. We said, well, let's do it. Let's find, ask around and let's see what, and we went to all the planning commissions and sewer authorities and everybody else. Was there a reason to change our growth boundary? To them they said, no. So, but, but there was, nobody requested. Nobody actually asked or requested for that. So I'm curious. I want to read back. I want to go back and see why we're against changing it at that time. Now, it may make sense to put those on sewer, but, but, but I'm just saying when we start changing the regional growth boundaries, we have some issues there. And I guess another question I had was, you want to add the, uh, greenway on that? The sewer said, why, why, why do you want to add all that as part of the sewer system, the regional growth boundary?
Because as I said earlier, under the current, and, and, and this is what DEP has done. DEP has apparently seen that we don't want to put septic systems in. So they've made their standards much more stringent than they used to be. Okay? And here's a plan that complies with your zoning ordinance. So if it complies with your zoning ordinance, why wouldn't you want these lots to be on public utilities? You use zoning to control development. You don't use utilities to control development. So if you're saying, if you're saying to me, no, we're not going to approve six more lots to be on public sewer. Okay? You have that right, but technically under your zoning, we're allowed to do these six lots. All we're asking is that it be served with public sewer and water.
I guess that would be one of the questions I would ask. If that remains agriculture, you can still build on it. It, it remains outside of the growth, regional growth boundary. You can still build on it. But, but so why, why do we want to expand it?
You want to expand it because we're complying, as I just said, we're, we're totally complying with your zoning ordinance. Your zoning ordinance, and you spent almost 10 years working on this, your zoning ordinance was intended to stop urban sprawl. Okay? So you've done it. You just said it's a good plan. All we're saying now is if this complies with your current plan, why can't I have public sewer service to these lots here? I'm already got sewer service to these lots.
Okay. So you, would, would you agree just to those five lots extended sewer service? Just to those five lots?
No, I want, I want service.
Well, there you go. That, now we, now we're starting to get a little bit of.
Well, it's one house bud.
Well, I don't know if it's one house or a hundred houses.
Why, why?
There's a reason we have that.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you want the best and safest thing for the environment? What you heard Martin say, and, and we can get a lot of other people. That's, why wouldn't you?
Here's where I'm torn. I'm not guaranteed that that's the best and safest thing for our environment. I'm not really sure of that. What I'm concerned is there's a regional growth boundary. There's a reason for it. Now, and you make a very good point. It, it's just five more slots. It would make sense going to that, change with those. I make a very good point to extend sewer to those. But the problem is, and I, and I agree, I felt we've always held the sewer service area as a, a, a shackle to, to our regional, we should have a regional growth boundary. And we should allow you to have sewer there, but do the same thing that you would do on ag, do the same buildings you would do on ag. Uh, I don't know if that makes sense, feasible, but I understand what you're saying on that.
But when you look at the general area, and it's on the second page of my hand out there, when you go across topographically and you look at that area, clear over to Harvest Fields. Harvest Fields is on the sewer, uh, public sewer. And they, they had a long process to get you to approve that.
Well, they were, they were already at, they were within feet of it. They were within, on the same thing. We gave it them. They're, they can't be any more development up there right now. They get one.
Well, maybe not, but that, that's the condition of your approval.
I'm just, I'm just throwing these things out.
But, but what I said was, and I'll stand on this, the reason we have a regional growth boundary, and there's no place else in this state that I'm aware of that has a regional growth boundary. And I've talked to a lot of engineers and people. Okay? The reason we have it is because we thought we were going to run out of sewer capacity. That's why we have it.
That was part of, I assume it was. I don't know that. But, but nobody, he's never turned anybody down for sewer. So how's he going to run out of capacity? Corey gives anybody that wants sewer, you can have it. So he has lots.
If you're inside the regional.
Or even outside of it. He, he, and Half Moon Township, they turned him down. He was going to go into Half Moon Township.
That's right.
And the township turned him down. He, he said, I have plenty of capacity for you. So the capacity isn't the issue right now.
Right. And, and they said they had their chance and they, and they, the supervisors there turned him down. But if they had said yes, would that have been right? Would that have been fair for them to get sewer service and I can't get sewer service?
I don't know the answer to that either. I don't know the answer to any of these things that I'm talking about. I'm just making observations.
Okay.
And, and concern for sprawl, basically. And to me, the sewer service versus septic systems and stand mounds and, and your private little sewer system or, or your biodegradable toilet, doesn't really play into that.
If you, if you give me sewer service to these six lots, that's it. I can't do anymore. I can't, I can't, I'm not asking you to give me carte blanche sewer service to this tract of land. I'm asking you to give me sewer service to six lots.
So you would be satisfied just for those six lots?
Absolutely.
Not the greenway.
Did you say the greenway too?
Well, the greenway, yeah.
The six lot is the greenway.
I have a question on that.
Yeah, please, Senator Jack.
Okay. My, my question on that, and I was going to ask you about our conservation design and our new ordinance. It was my understanding that once this gets done, you don't put any more buildings on it. That's open space. Can, can he ever put another house on that greenway since, you know, he got the allotted lots and, and that's on the deep. He, he, that's my understanding. Am I wrong there or?
No, from, for the zoning ordinance, when it comes to a conservation design subdivision, the greenway land is only allowed to have one dwelling unit on it.
Okay. Sorry, that was my question.
So that, yeah, I, we have not checked this for compliance with the ordinance, but the concept of a greenway land is that it has to stay that way perpetually.
That's right.
Okay. So can, 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 a house can be put on, a, a house on all those semi acres.
One house.
On 22 acres?
Yeah.
Let's try to keep this moving.
Okay. Well, those are just some of my observations.
Michael Fox?
Well, yeah, I, I believe that sewer service is better than septic as far as safety goes. And yes, Harvest Fields had a hard time getting theirs, but that situation, I couldn't believe that, um, that having, having a church with, um, peak flows, um, on a septic in that sensitive area was terrible, terrible idea. So I'm really happy that happened. And it is a few lots and we have the capacity. I think sewer service is better management than, uh, septic. So I personally would be in favor of, um, supporting him in this request.
Um, let me add a few. One is, um, in terms of the sewer, um, service district or the regional growth boundary preventing growth and sprawl, those five lots are going to be built on.
If they can, if they can perk.
If they can perk.
If they could.
Or you can design something else.
I don't think, can they, can they perk now?
Tom said it is. Said it can't.
Okay, they can't perk. So they.
I, I don't believe, I haven't, to be honest with you. I did random log pits with Mary Kay up there. We haven't tested each of these lots. But what she found, we went over the whole site. She didn't find one log pit that would pass, even, even over in here. And we had a soil scientist engaged over here. You, you, you need, uh, 20 inches even to put a sand mound in. So I engaged a soil scientist. He thought we had it barely, but Mary Kay didn't agree with him. So he has to put in this very expensive, uh, I don't want to call it experimental, but very expensive sewage system, which results in spray irrigation, which is allowed. Okay? But I don't believe, based on our preliminary testing here, that Mary Kay is going to find anything, uh, suitable on these lots. But we come right back to the question, if I'm allowed to have public sewer here, why not here?
I'm not arguing that. You're right. My, my main.
As long, and you know, this is all we can do.
Well, that's, that's what everybody told us.
What do you mean?
Second, second question, please. Um, if we were to be able to get the center region to grant sewer service to that area, does that, is that divorced from the zoning? I know there's, that, that opens up more zoning possibilities, but does it require a change in zoning?
No. So the thing is with that development specific agreement that the township would have to enter into with the applicant, it would only allow the sewer expansion if it were approved by five out of the six municipalities for the development that is being proposed.
approved by five out of the six municipalities for the development that is being proposed. So there wouldn't be a situation where the applicant can come back later and say, ah, I changed my mind, now I want to have it rezoned this so I can do a totally different development. It is intended to be that whatever the sewer approval is granted for, that it is what gets built.
Is that in reference to the R1 comment that is in the material?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate topic.
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, right.
Is there anybody in the public that wants to-
Robin Becker on the Zoom has her hand up.
Okay, well, let's start there then.
Robin, you can unmute.
Okay. I'm against giving permission to go on sewer. I, I think that the ecological concerns outweigh the other concerns. I also don't trust at all that the development will be contained. There has been enough disruption to the Academy Street region by the houses that have already been approved, and if this is any way that we can stall, prevent, or delay further development, I think many people would agree that this is time to do so, and to no longer, and to no longer allow developers to get extra permission, get extra judicial opportunities, and to, and to have people on our boards and supervising people go along simply to go along without the other concerns about sprawl, about sewage, about congestion. And I think we have approved plenty of houses on Hawk Ridge and need not approve more. Thank you.
Yes, Dorothy? Please, up, up, please, no, no, I'm just up to the mic.
You gotta go to the mic, gotta go to the mic. You got, you got, got a face of music like the rest of us.
There's someone running around with a microphone.
Yeah, we shouldn't do that.
I'm not doing that.
My question is, and I'm Dorothy Blair, by the way, that's West Main Street. My question is about the other people who might want to join onto the sewage. And, not that I think that's so bad, and, and from an environmental perspective, but Tom Songer may not want to put anything else up here, but what about the people surrounding that area, which could you, they could use these grinder pumps to attach, and that might spur more development, just keep going? So you may not have any more in mind, but-
They have to comply with the current ordinance, and that would be very difficult to do.
They wouldn't be able to do it?
Yeah, I wouldn't think.
I don't mean developments, I mean individuals that are buying, buy, these lands might be bought and sold, might be divided, and I'm just, that's what I'm thinking, that it pushes development up the hill farther.
You mean on that 14.8 acre lot there to the left, is that what you're talking about?
I don't know, I mean, any of those places.
I mean, I mean, yes, Dr. Spencer's building a home on that lot, and he's doing it with on-lot sewage, and he has, he, I believe, under the current ordinance, he would have a very difficult time subdividing that.
Okay, well-
And going through, he'd have to go through the same process if he wanted public sewage, okay? So this, this, this request does not involve his lot.
Well, that was my question.
No.
Could those lands be subdivided and then just use these, and how far is the reach of these grinder pumps?
You can put them in and pump sewage miles if you want to.
I have one right down here in Main Street.
Wow, so it's possible that a lot of people could be getting, getting properties to use that, this, this particular pump here from quite a distance, and would be able to go up in every, places that are now on-
Well, if they-
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, if the regional growth boundary is expanded, there would be this development agreement, it would be expanded for these five or six lots. The people above couldn't come in then and ask to have sewer extended to their property, they would have to go through the same process that Mr. Songer's going through to get sewer. So because of the way the DRI process has changed with this development agreement, it sort of stops speculation, because we used to have developers that would come in and it would, not here, but elsewhere in the region, and it was like speculative sewage, because they might want to develop it sometime in the future. This stops that. The people above, the only way they would probably end up getting sewer is if they had a failure, which is what happened at Tussie Mountain in the 1980s. Tussie Mountain had a failure, so DEP came in and said, you have to run a lateral to the edge of Tussie Mountain's property just to serve that one property. Tussie can't upsize that line. So those folks likely would be in a situation where the state would come in and mandate that they had to be connected. But that would be it. I mean, it, they would have to go through this process, and he's at the very, like, he isn't even at the start line of this process, he is in the dugout. So it, it's a long process. I'm not saying they would or wouldn't want to do that, but it's, this wouldn't open that door to them.
And Bear Madros is on sewer, but not on the line that goes to Tussie.
Yeah, Tussie's a dedicated-
They have a dedicated six inch line that no one can tap.
Good. Okay, so you can, you can make something like that.
Well, DEP did that.
Oh, good, thank you very much.
The, Tussie had a terribly failed system, and had to do something with all the crowds that keep coming in, so.
And that was put in long before the regional growth boundary concept was even implemented.
Let me ask you, Tom, about the lot, the, let's see, it's the, the five lots, the ones that Mary Kay won the pool.
Yeah.
What would happen if-
Well, as I said, we didn't do individual pits there, we did them in general, in that area, and I couldn't, we couldn't, we went all the way down to right back of the Emma Court lots, and she couldn't find anything down there that was acceptable.
I was, I was thinking about just changing the size of those lots, and maybe putting three lots in on, on, on site, but if they don't perk.
It, it does, if, I'll be honest with you, if this is not acceptable to be on sewage, and I can't get them to perk, which I don't think I, I can based on the current DEP regulations, which are only going to get more stringent, then I guess the Greenway lot may get bigger.
Yeah.
And, and what you're going to have here, and Chris here is going to say a few words, we talk about R1 development. So all these lots, I can tell you, and this Greenway lot, they'll all sell, but it's going to be the Hunt Ridge Manor, the Aspen Heights, those type of homes. We need affordable housing in our area, and the only way to get that is with R1 zoning. So maybe, Chris, at this time, you want to say a few words about the need for R1 zoning and, and, and the R1 lots?
Yeah, let's do that, and then get back to the public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, please, Chris.
Okay. So I've been working in housing as a real estate agent since the 80s, and had the chance to, to watch a lot of developments that have happened over the years. What you're not seeing is developments happening now. You're just not. So, you know, the idea of, of the sprawl, to give you, to give you the example, you can't really build a home on a lot these days without spending $400,000 and up, all in, $500,000, and it's a shame that that's become the norm rather than the stretch, right? So if we're forced to go to three lots as opposed to five, and make them even larger estate lots on septic systems, then what you're going to have is fewer housing units and more cost to, to have them, right? So the, the affordability of homes now is the number one reason for real estate inflation. And when we're talking about real estate inflation, you know, if, if some of you have been listening over the last few years, multiple bids on homes, due to a lack of inventory. When it gets right down to it, it's always a lack of inventory. And now, people are saying to me, well, Chris, won't the prices drop and homes become more affordable? No, because the, the issue we have with the lack of affordable housing, and I'm not talking about state-supported housing or anything of the sort, I'm talking about the guy, that if you, if you've got two people with a good job, then maybe they could actually have a new home. Well, that's becoming increasingly impossible, because we're not giving them any opportunities. You take a development like Springfield Commons with, what was it, 60?
64.
Okay, so 64 lots, those are not, those are not McMansions, they're, they're not these fabulous houses that would be only accessible by a few, right? But, the fact of matter is, if you spend some time driving around in Springfield Commons and take a look at a home like, oh, I'm not sure if it's still here, yeah.
Are you guys back there?
Yeah, the, the kind of home they have, and that you see all, I was over there today, and I'm, I'm thinking to myself, this isn't cookie cutter, this isn't like just boring stuff. You know why? Because it's open to different builders, it's not tract housing. So what we don't have is, we don't have developments like this that are not the builder, that are inviting diversity, different builders, supporting the local economy, as opposed, as opposed to only a large corporate entity or tract type of company, okay? So, that, that's what I would have to say about that. The idea of not getting anything that can be put onto sewer if the capacity is there, because of something that was created years ago before capacity was either increased or was discovered to be more than adequate, is sort of adding insult to injury, right? Continue to, to work around that, when I really don't know of other places in PA where they've got growth boundaries. But, but we're not, we're not here to get rid of growth boundaries, I'm not, I'm not proposing that. I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying that when Kwood Two came in, I felt like gee whiz, that's like a Fox Point, or, or a, some of the great developments they have, that actual families can afford to buy, raise their kids in, and grow old in, the Bryn Woods, and, I mean, you can go through Patton, Ferguson, but Willowbrook, that was in the 80s, okay? I'm, I'm just trying to think. The Hill, which is a beloved neighborhood, you guys were talking about Bollesburg Pike a few minutes ago, and Kimport, those are great neighborhoods, they were built post-World War II. So now, what do we have in Harris Township? We've got fabulous, ultra-expensive neighborhoods, and a bunch of them, not just a couple. So this is just trying to put a dent in that need that I see every day. The re, and to reiterate it, the reason the prices aren't dropping isn't because the interest rates aren't making it more painful. The, the prices are staying up because there's no supply. And the interest rates going up, bizarrely enough, made it even more difficult for people to then give up their old mortgage, sell their home, and create some kind of opportunity for our children and grandchildren to buy, buy a home, period. So we're, we're shy of units in the US, I think, and I'll say this is a fact, when we went into the Great Recession, we had over 2 million surplus, a 2 million home surplus in the United States, okay? And that was part of what happened, it was a completely different kind of crisis, you know, where people were, if you had a pulse, you were given money and you were building stuff. You swing around to 2020, we had a four to five million house shortage in the US, which we would take us 2 million new constructions a year, residential, to build our way out of that, and we don't do 1.5 now, each year. So I, I know I just jumped all over the place, but I feel, we, this could have been, people want to live in Harris Township. It's gore, if you take a drive up and look at that housing, believe it or not, I think some people might even find it as nice in their own idea as some of the houses on other streets like Academy. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny has-
All right, yeah, please.
What do you got?
Jenny, do you want to unmute?
Yes. And just, from the comment of the previous speaker, people want to live in Harris Township, I think it's because of the quality of the township. Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned that if Bollesburg expands in kind of pieces like a jigsaw puzzle, rather than having a philosophy of growth, that we could damage that. I'm not against this individual development, right? But I don't want to see us do things piece by piece. I'd like to know, like, we've decided certain boundaries for certain things, that it's not done on one request, but on a bigger picture.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, go.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I just, you made a comment about houses, I, Bruce gave me a book, I took it from Bruce, brought it here, and the theory is, we should have zoning and get rid of everything else. No setbacks, no nothing. And let, let people build to, to, to originality, nice-looking houses, instead of having, instead of having Joe the Motors look exactly like the Catholic Church. That's, that's, we should, maybe that, maybe that's something we should think about down the road, to get rid of our zoning, keep our zoning, but get all the ordinances that go inside of it, let back site, whatever, everything else, with, make them within reason. That's, that's just a little bit of opinion on the side, as far as that goes. So I, what, what Jenny said is right, I, I don't have a jack, it does make kind of sense to do this right here. But my problem is, I'd like to see the alternatives, and have the planning commission talk about this, about regional growth boundary change, what happens if we don't, what, what, what happened if we didn't do, do it this way? If we were forced to do it another way, I'd like to see more of that. I'm not, I'm all familiar with it, I probably should be, but I'm not familiar with that. What would happen if, if we said, okay, well, well, let's, let's just give us six more lots or five more lots, the sewer, let them develop nice houses over there. What if we don't, what are the options that can be done with this property? Maybe this is the least, least obtrusive we want to do, I don't know that. But, but my, I'm very concerned about changing the growth, the growth boundary a lot, because that, that, we put a lot, that's, that's part of our comprehensive plan, which we're required to have. And we are required by law, and I don't know why a county and state doesn't do it, but we were required by law to have a comprehensive plan, and that is part of our comprehensive plan, this regional growth boundary. So before that changes, that, that's what concerns me, that I have to agree, five more lots, with, put some, put some reasonable housing on there instead of estate lots or whatever, but I'd like to see what some of the alternatives would be, if we don't, if, if we said no, and, and Tom, that's your property, and you sure can, you want to do it, that's for darn sure, you should, and you should.
I have to comply with your current ordinance?
Yes, yes.
And you could look at other options, but we thought, when we looked at other options, this was the most reasonable for your current zoning. But after we started into that, I looked, I looked at the adjoining properties and everything, and I looked at the need in the center region for single-family homes, particularly nice homes, but some of them could be starter homes. We, we have, in Springfield Commons next to Hawk Ridge, we have some homes in there that are 1,600 square feet, all the way up to, say, 3,500 square feet. But the thing that drove the sales in Springfield Commons was the fact that people could choose their own builder, that we did lawn care, all the lawns are done through the HOA.
Is this going to be condo?
All the snow is-
Is it condo also?
We're going to do that in Hawk Ridge Phase One also. This is what people want.
Wait, what was the question, I'm sorry.
By, is this going to be condo?
No.
No, no, it's not a condo, it's fee simple.
Springfield, Springfield started out as-
They were, they changed to fee simple.
And went fee simple.
Right.
Because people want to own the lot.
Association still handles all of the maintenance, all of the others, okay.
And that's just like any neighborhood, that could be a very diverse older neighborhood could decide that they want to go to Walmart to buy their mowing and shoveling, right? They, they're just getting together and they're hiring landscapers to come in and take care of lawn and snow, which is very attractive to a lot of people. Anyway.
Okay, so, so anyway, when I started looking at this, I just, and I broached it in my memo to you, and I'm, I'm willing to look at what you just said, maybe an alternative R1-type development, which is-
This may be the most reasonable way to go, I don't know that.
Which, well, needs further discussion, okay? You can't decide that here this evening. I'm here to tell you though, I'm willing to work with you on this, but I don't have years to spend on that issue.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Okay? We're either going to do it, or we're not going to do it. But I wanted to, if we did something like that, and I've looked at this, how do we build a, what I'll call a more sustainable community? And this is, I've been involved in a lot of development in State College area over my career, 45-plus years, but we've never done what I call a real sustainable community. But today, with the price of solar panels coming down, and there are communities that are being built with sustainability in mind. So my friend, Sally Eador's here with me, and he's an expert on solar power.
Wait a minute, gang it up on us.
He just happened to be driving by and saw the lights on.
Yeah, just popped in, just, I know this is running long, just a couple of quick comments about what, what Tom is talking about. We work with Tom, I, I work for BAI Group, I'm, I'm general manager for renewables at BAI, we do a bunch of, all kinds of solar. And one of my passions is a, what I'll call a, a sustainable or a solar community, or a community microgrid. So you take a community, you know, lots of maybe smaller homes, larger homes, doesn't matter, they're- matter, they're a community of people, and the same idea where they kind of pool in to take care of the lawn and take care of the, you know, all these kinds of things. Well, the reason we don't do that with energy is because it's cost prohibitive, right? You have somebody build a power plant, feed you the power, it's cheaper because they can maintain it and do all of that. What solar is doing is it's making it, what we call local energy, become more cost-effective. And you guys have permitted a whole bunch of solar in Harris Township. But what an energy community or what I'll call a community microgrid does is it allows sort of like a purchasing power for all the homes in that community. They can put solar on their roofs. But the beauty of it, and you can just say that was my idea, not yours, but the beauty of it is, all of a sudden, this community could be potentially islanded from the grid. What that means is they become a microgrid onto themselves so that if the grid is failing, they have power. Not only is their power cheaper because it's onsite, near-site, on the roof in the community, but they have storage solutions near-site, onsite in their community. And this is happening actually in Alabama. There's a smart community, a whole, I think it's maybe 70 homes are built on a microgrid by Alabama Power. And they're powered the way I'm describing to you. So I was talking Tom's ear off about this concept, and we kind of took a look at this and saw some potential here. So these are things we've worked on in our office actively, looking at how we can integrate something like that here. And last thing I'll say, if you get an energy bill, you know costs are going up for utility costs. And that's because of how we generate electricity in the state of Pennsylvania. About 50% or so, 40-some percent of our electricity is from gas. Well, when eventually, I think, the pipelines are going to get built, demand overseas is too much. Gas prices aren't going to go down. They're going to increase. And we're more dependent on gas on our kind of what I'll call traditional power generation. Solar is growing, solar is cheaper, it's always going to get cheaper. This is a way to bring solar more affordably to neighborhoods here in Harris Township. We'll get this built somewhere. I'd love it to be here. We'll get this built somewhere in Center Region, and it'd be fun if it's this development.
Letter supporting that bill. Did I bring that up?
Yeah, the COG did that.
The COG just sent a letter supporting that bill, so, I forget what it was called, 537, I don't know what the number is. But it was allowing everybody to be able to purchase from, like a solar generating plant.
Right.
And I think that's going to come for the Senator, whoever has to pass that.
Yeah, so what you're saying is community solar, what I'll call traditional community solar. We build a solar farm, anybody within that utility region, West Penn Power can buy electricity.
I didn't know you couldn't do that before.
Yeah, you can't, unfortunately. But this is supercharging that. This is not just community solar, as in, as a solar farm somewhere, you know, in another township, as long as it's West Penn Power, you can buy power from it. This is onsite, near-site. The children in this development can go see the solar panels. I mean, it's what I think the future of energy is going to be. It's how energy got started in the U.S. We went away from that because of cost. We can get it done. I could go on and on, but you know, you don't have time for it.
Don't get you started, right?
So anyway, thank you for the opportunity to share.
Okay, I acknowledge I'm going to give Diane a chance to talk.
To follow up what has been mentioned by a few people, and that is the house pollution. If you remember our hillside when it was green, okay? Now walk from Academy Street, we have a full development, we're going to have an additional development. We move over to the gates, which is, how many units? Can somebody help me with that?
155.
155.
155, okay? And so we're being told that we don't have enough low-cost housing, yet the property for Mr. Songer is $140,000 for a quarter to a half of an acre. That does not sound like low-cost housing to me. So it sounds as if we have two purposes that are not agreeing with each other. Second question, what happens from here? What's the procedure?
That's where we're going to go.
Okay.
So unless anybody objects here, I want to wrap this out. Okay? So, you know, Mr. Songer, with all respect, and I mean that sincerely, your job's to make money. Our job is to look out for the entire community. I think you've received a lot of input back from us today. The next step is we need to see something concrete that'll go through our process before we can really, and Bud's giving you some thoughts, you've heard some thoughts for the rest of us. So bring us something that we can, on paper, that we can.
This is it.
You have to submit a subdivision plan.
What?
You have to, Mr. Songer, go through the DRI process, Mark will explain.
It's not speculative anymore. We have to concretely review something to make sure that it is complying with our zoning and our subdivision regulations. And to make sure that if you go forward and if the DRI process goes forward, and you have to put together something that we can review, and if the supervisors decide to send that to the Center Region, it goes as a package. And then you get tied to that subdivision. So you have to give us something that the host municipality is comfortable, that we review, and we enter into a development agreement with you. That's a legal agreement. So we're not going to do that based on a concept plan that may or may not meet our zoning ordinance. We have no idea. This has not been formally submitted to us. So you have to decide if wanting the sewer for these five or six lots is that important, that you want to go through the expense of submitting everything you have to do, a subdivision plan, the DRI, pay for all the review that we're going to have to do? Or if you just want to go forward with Hawk Ridge Phase 1 and Benjamin Heights, which you have sewer for and you could do?
But then, look, we're going to see some alternatives.
Yes, I think Bud would like to see alternatives. So what happens?
I wish I could say that's not the best, but it may be the best way to go. I don't, I don't know. I'm being a hypocrite here because I went through that myself, but.
Okay, I understand all that. Last issue then is parkland, okay? So I bought a development here from the previous owners, and I come to find out this past spring, when Amy and I had a conversation, that I owed $27,000 for parkland, okay? And I said, where did this come from? Nobody told me about it, okay? And I got a copy, Amy sent me a copy of the agreement, and the agreement was with the previous owners. The money should have been collected 2014. It wasn't. $27,000, it's clear in the agreement, the previous owner should have paid. So what I put in my memo is if I did go ahead with this development, and Amy and the Parks Committee, we met earlier this year, we talked about, Amy, you want to scroll down, please? Okay, thank you. We talked about a connecting hike-bike way to get to what would ultimately be Phase 2 because apparently the Parks Committee thought there should be a connector to the south. And I said, well, I can only do what I can do on my land, okay? I can't go over here and authorize anything over here really because Academy Street's a private street impact and it serves the people that it serves along there. So Amy asked me to consider a hike-bike way across this lot that meanders up through and ultimately would connect here. And this lot is not a good place for a hike-bike way because of topography and this ditch that goes through there. Plus, it's a buildable lot. It was approved, and you could build right in here, okay? So what I'm proposing is, this is a flag lot, has to have a paved driveway down to Emma Court, that we make that driveway 24 feet wide and six feet of that can be a paved hike-bike way, which turns into a soft path here and comes up. And I'll give you all that land to do that. I'll build it here. That would be worth more than $27,000 in my opinion, plus give you land over here to build a connector through a hike-bike way to connect in to the hike-bike way that goes around Springfield Commons.
Actually, what Mr. Songer has said is not 100% correct. And there are two members of the Parks and Rec Committee at this meeting. Jenny Evans is on the Parks and Rec Committee, Diane Farr is on the Parks and Rec Committee. We met onsite with Mr. Songer and his son to talk about this issue. This is when he wanted to pipe the intermittent stream on, is that Lot 8, Tom? On Lot 8. So we had talked to him because he has a repair and buffer regulation on that lot, which impedes how he can develop that. So we brought up to him the idea of what we had done at Nittany View Park with that developer back in the 90s, which we just exercised the easement, and asked him to give us an access easement that we could then develop on our own into a path that would connect if there were a second phase or that we could work with anybody who owned that next piece of land if it weren't developed to try to get a pathway put up there. There are some stormwater and some other significant challenges on that property. We offered, and Mr. Songer had agreed over the summer, and I have all of the emails to share that, had agreed to give us this access easement and then to give us the difference in fee and lieu funds. This issue is very much not settled apparently because he's reneging on the agreement that he made to the Parks and Rec Committee, and Jenny and Diane are both here and can attest to what I've just said. And I have the emails I can share with the board supervisors.
I didn't agree, okay? We talked about it.
Your attorney was going to draw up the agreement.
Well, why isn't this a better solution? Tell me, please.
Because you're trying, the Parks and Rec Committee first of all would need to look at that.
What's this?
The Parks and Rec Committee first of all would need to look at that. That is their purview, and they would need to determine if that's what they want. Second of all, as Chairman Lord said, you're a developer. I respect that. You try to make money. I respect that. In this situation, you have to give us parkland that meets our ordinance, or you have to give us fee and lieu funds. That's your call.
Okay, well then, when I do this.
But you can't give us parkland in another phase.
It's not another phase.
Unless you have an agreement with the township.
Look at the subdivision plan, Amy. This is Phase 1 that was included here. Furthermore.
Tom, we've been through this.
Read the parkland agreement, which says the developer has the right to give the parkland in this phase or a subsequent phase. Okay, that's what the agreement says.
Mr. Songer, we've been through this, and I don't think we should fight about this in a public meeting.
Let's, let's.
I'm just telling you, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. I did not know about that agreement. It was not recorded. If the township has an agreement, they should record it, okay? I didn't know about it.
This board right here today cannot approve this. This is not the time, we're not at that point. So again, put forth your proposal and let us take a look at it, okay? I like the idea of making a connection up to, up through here and up to the top of the mountain, but we can't just debate it here. We have to have something on paper that says, here's what you're going to do, here's what you're asking, and then we can talk about it.
Right.
Okay?
I'll do that, but going back to this, if I had been able to get a pipe in there, I still think this is a much better solution for a hike-bike way, okay?
I like it.
And it's all about connectivity and it's all about walkways. And if somebody can explain to me why this is a better way to go than what I'm proposing, I'd like to hear that.
There you go.
Okay.
So if I give you, just to be clear here, just to be clear here, you should know enough about this based on conceptual plans and what I just discussed as to whether or not you will approve this. It's okay for the staff to check this out. But to do the detailed engineering drawings, we're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
You're right.
Okay? We know we can do this. But I've got to be honest with you. I don't want to, I don't want to spend thousands and, I'm talking $50,000 to $100,000 here on engineering that you then say, well, that's nice, we're not approving it.
Bruce, Mark had a suggestion that would save Mr. Songer maybe some money in the long run and help us advance this conversation.
Yeah, what it comes back to is some things Mr. Graham was bringing up about options and other things to consider. Keep in mind, I understand you don't want to necessarily put a lot of money into a plan to do the engineering. It's going to have to happen at some point, and I certainly wouldn't want to see the township and you enter into an agreement if it were to get approved for sewer that for some reason there's an ordinance that you're in violation of that the plan doesn't work, okay? But where Mr. Graham brought up the idea of seeing options, I guess I'm a little concerned in the terms of how the DRI process moves. How do we have options considered about how different things could be developed up here while Mr. Songer is also asking for permission to submit a DRI? It feels like a chicken and egg scenario. So I wonder if the board would want the Planning Commission or someone to discuss what the impacts of sewer would be and what kind of options would exist if it were to be expanded versus not. I just don't know how else to have those options evaluated, what Mr. Graham was talking about with Mr. Songer also putting together a DRI.
That's my favorite, Mark, Planning Commission.
Well, the Planning Commission, I've been thinking of that. I thought maybe our planner would go through and say this. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I would do that, but I would take that to some, I mean, I can bring it to the board, it doesn't matter. I just am trying to think of a way to make sure your interest in seeing other options is explored. I don't know how.
Let me summarize. We have three issues. We have the sewer issue, we have the zoning issue, and we have the parkland bike path issue. I'm not going to hold a vote on it today. I'll give you my opinion. I'm leaning towards sewer. I like the bike path. I'm not enthusiastic about the rezoning. That's just me, and I can be convinced otherwise on any one of those three.
Well, I would say this, back to Mark's comment and what you just said, Mr. Lord, I would have John Seph do a conceptual plan for an R1, okay? If you're willing to look at that and what you've heard about our commitment to green technology, sustainability, et cetera. Because as Selv indicated, this could be a great demonstration project for the area. But you have to approve it, you have to want it, okay? If you don't, you don't. But I think it's an opportunity that deserves to be further explored. So I would have John's firm do a conceptual plan for an R1-type development, realizing though, in order for that to move forward, I got to go through the DRI process and get sewer serviced. That's the only way it can be done.
Well, frankly, it's going to be a package.
Pardon me?
It's going to be a package.
Yeah, be a package.
All right.
But I'll spend the money to do that, and then what I would suggest, and I would like you to consider, is that we have a joint meeting with your Planning Commission to discuss this opportunity. And if it looks like it's promising and you want to move to a, and I'll enter into an agreement based on a conceptual plan with you so you know I'm not going to do a bait and switch on you, I never would, but if you want that, once you see a conceptual plan, I know you can't rezon a property based on a conceptual plan. But anyway, if you're willing to be objective and look at that based on the need in the area and the desire to create more affordable lots or more affordable housing, I'm willing to consider that. Does that sound like a plan?
Wait, can I, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. We have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Committee and the Shade Tree Commission the end of January. I think it would be very appropriate to discuss this there because the Parks and Rec Committee can also talk about the parkland issue. I don't know legally that you can enter into an agreement based on a conceptual plan for rezoning because a rezoning is a process that's driven by the state of Pennsylvania and the municipal planning code. So that's something we would have to look into. And then my other question is, I believe Supervisor Graham was asking to see what would happen if you didn't get sewer.
Basically, that's, I guess that's my question. If we deny this, what would happen? It's.
Well, what you're going to get, I already said it, you're going to get.
Well, let's take a look at that. I know what you said, but I can't visualize it.
Well.
This may be the way to go, and I'm not saying it's not, but.
You're going to get, you're going to get a plan that creates these lots right here, and the rest of this is going to be open space on which you can build one house. So you're going to get somebody who's very well off, who's going to come in and build a really big house on probably 25 acres. Am I right, Chris?
So can you, when you're doing these concept plans, Mr. Songer, and you're going to do the R1, can you do a concept plan that just shows what happens if you don't get sewer? Because that's what Supervisor Graham is asking. He's. He's asking for the options.
I don't know what I'm asking for, but...
That's, I think that's what you're asking. You're asking for the options to see what happens.
Yeah, I don't want him to go back, I don't want him to have to go back to the engineering firm, and cost him five thousand dollars every time they pull out a piece of...
Well, I'll go out, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Mary Kay Lupton, and I'll pay for her and tobacco, and we'll go up there, and we'll do pits on, on these five lots plus one out here in this green space, and I'll, I'll...
Guys, can we stop? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's stop this whole thing, okay? Number one, you tell, you, you submit what you want, okay? If we, if we say no, then you have to go back to the drawing board. But, but I'm not, I'm like Bruce, I'm, we just did an ag, took fifteen years to get this thing the way we want it. I'm not, I'm not going to go and change it again.
Okay.
That's, that's what we did for fifteen years. We made sure it was right. So I'm not going back and do it again. So you give us what you want on that property, and if we can support it, we'll support it and move it forward.
Right.
And I think that's what we're all saying here. So you make your mind up. I mean, I can't, I can't say that, well, just do this, and this isn't going to cost you more. And I, I apologize for that without respect, but we're, we've talked about this inexhaustibly here tonight. I think you need to go back and bring us something that we can talk about.
Well, you need to think about that, but like I said, the opportunities there would require, to do an R1-type development, it requires rezoning. We just thought we would bring that forth. If you, if you have an interest in that, I offered to do a conceptual plan that shows what that might look like. But if there's no interest in that, but there is, drive around Harris Township, drive around the center region, there is no land for sale for R1 development that I'm aware of. And the only people that are doing R1 developments are usually the two big, biggest track builders we have in the area, Burke's Homes and SNA. And Burke's Homes is out in Benner Township and Spring Township during development. They're the ones who did K-wood recently, sold out in less than two years, right, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, well, it was a lottery for the lots. And, you know, what I keep, what I keep thinking about, and I'm not a developer, so it's, it's, but what I do see is that if young families don't have homes that people are leaving to be able to buy those homes, because if people are leaving now to go and, they may be downsizing, but they could be stepping up, meaning, yeah, they're going to go and they're going to spend quite a bit of money to build a home, even if it's 2,000, 2200 square feet in a walk ridge. But their house would be freed up where they're leaving, which gives somebody, somebody's kid or somebody entering the job force here an opportunity to maybe own a home. It won't be one of these, but it'll be a home where those people came from. They're not just going to tear their house down when they build a home here, they're going to sell it. And that, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have the building blocks right now.
Okay, we're, we're, at this point, we're going, we're going back over the same territory. We've, we've heard it all. So I'm, with all pleas, we're, we're done on this topic for today.
Okay.
For today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now comes the easy stuff, 2023 operating budget.
So we've been meeting over the last couple of weeks to refine our budget. At this point, we should tentatively approve the budget so that we can send it out for public review and comment. We have to leave, have it out for public inspection for at least 20 days before your formal adoption. The public hearing and formal adoption will take place at your December 12th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Don't move. Second.
Comment? Should we make any comments on what we're doing?
Sure, if you want me to.
I mean, do we need...
Well, the most, the most of this is discussion.
Right. Do I mean, do we need to tell everybody we're putting the points increase in?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm planning on when I put it out to the public. I'll explain what's in the budget. That's what I typically do.
We don't have to talk about that tonight, right?
We can, I mean, whatever you want to do.
Gotcha.
I don't have a vote.
Anybody? Okay, all those in favor of, yeah, all those in favor of tentatively approving and scheduling a public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, no? Done. Adoption, Resolution 22-14, adoption of the 2023-2027 capital improvement program.
Don't move.
Five seconds.
Somebody's on there, bud.
Okay, my turn?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, no? All right, seven. Come on, turn the page.
What are you lost? I'm, my only warm agenda is...
Resolution 22-15, amendment in the Articles of Incorporation for CADA to extend the life of the authority to 2072. I won't be here.
2072?
CADA was incorporated as an authority on May 17, 1974. Municipal Authorities Act sets a maximum term of existence of 50 years for authorities in the state, meaning CADA's term will end in 2024. An amendment of CADA's Articles of Incorporation is needed to extend the authority beyond 2024. CADA's starting this process now, as it requires action from all of the member municipalities. All this does, and there was a letter from Luana in your packet, is just extends the life of the authority. All the funding discussions and other things that we have to have are still ongoing. This doesn't ratify any of that.
And we're members of that authority?
Yes.
We have a, we have authority person on the board?
Yes, that's Richard Kip.
Yes, okay. Are we authorizing him to vote, or this is...
We have to vote on this resolution. The CADA board already adopted a resolution. We're, as a member, we have to authorize the extension.
So Mr. Kip's recommended we do this, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. You're right, it's, I'm sure it's just paperwork.
Second motion?
Yes. So...
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Of course, how difficult should CADA, should the CADA model change? Changed a lot the last couple of years. Is, how binding is this with respect to some kind of operational change, going to a county system? How would all those fit into what we're talking about?
I am not...
That's up to the authority.
Yeah, that's up to the authority. I'm not a hundred, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the Municipal Authorities Act. However, I believe they could, there is a process in place that they could amend their Articles of Incorporation if they need to.
Because, you know, as we keep growing and getting community more and community again, they're going to be an integral part of that.
Yep.
Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Look, we'll have a direct route from the diamond to the library, three times a day.
You just made the library people very happy.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, no? Approved. Request to remove the passing lane on Route 45 at the entrance to Hunt Ridge Manor.
So we received this request from a resident. Actually, Frank received it. He was up at the State College Area Connector meeting, and he talked to the resident, who reached out to me then. There's a passing zone in front of the entrance at Roslin Road off of Route 45 East. Since it's a state road, you basically have to send a letter and ask the state to look at it and do a passing zone study, and then if it meets their criteria, they'll determine if they can remove it or not.
Same thing we did at Tate Farm.
Where would they put it?
Where would they put it? Just remove it.
They just remove it.
What, they got a passing zone through there?
No, they don't.
We don't need to.
They removed one there.
You removed it over at Tate Farm.
You are going to have to make that road much more dangerous if you don't have a passing zone.
They removed the passing zone further down 45 from Hunt Ridge Manor a couple years ago at our request.
Why would you want to let anybody pass right through?
Oh, you're going to stop them.
What? You put a double yellow line in?
Yeah.
Frank, I'm just telling you that without, without going to a certain strength, without a passing zone, cars are so frustrated, and they, I drive down Center Hall, they'll pass anywhere they want down through there, willing me.
Okay, that's fine.
So, but there needs to be passing zones.
Well, that's fine, but it's not going to be there.
Well, I don't know that. Why not?
The danger with that position is we have guardrails on both sides. There's no escaping.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe, I, if they were to do a study, I, I would have liked us to do a study, but I can tell you, passing zones are, are, make roads much safer.
We removed the one over in front of Tate Farm.
And how, and how's that, why's that working out over there?
It's worked better. We haven't had as many accidents as we used to have there.
So, so we're asking, we're asking the state to do a study.
I would, I would like to see what they say, really, I would, because...
I make a motion.
I don't have a problem to see the study. I'll, I'll second we ask to do a study.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, no? Done. Okay, the manager's report.
Uh, not too much to report here, other than I did send out the request for proposals to local engineering firms. I sent it out to five and told them to respond by November 30th, so we might want to do some, think about doing some interviews after we get that back. We'll make that appointment January 3rd.
No response at all?
Yep.
Well, I just sent it out on Thursday.
Oh.
So I literally just sent it out. And I don't know, Bruce, if you want to talk a little bit about our meeting with Senator Langerholtz and his staff about the connector project?
Certainly, yeah. Manager and I met with Senator Langerholtz, who represents the western part of the, of the center region, but is also chair of the Senate Transportation Committee. He listened to our concerns. One of the things I was pleased with, he asked us how far up the food chain we've gotten in terms of having these conversations. We indicated that we hadn't gotten outside of the district, and he thought that was unacceptable, and is offering to arrange a high-level meeting with PennDOT officials at the deputy secretary, secretary level. And he actually was thinking two, one in the near term, and then another one after the new administration is in. He also listened to our concerns about lack of transparency and about the, really collecting a lot of public comments but not doing anything with them.
Really?
Yeah, he said, that sounds familiar.
Yeah.
So I think, I think it was a, I think we kind of broke through the ceiling, and we'll see what comes of it, but it was a positive development.
Are, are we including other township in this, or we've been disassociated with?
We, we, the two, Amy and I met with the senator.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's, that's where we're at.
And as far as the other township, when, when they set up at the meeting I was at, when they were talking about the connector down on 45, and they said, well, we didn't want it, and somebody said, well, PennDOT, or somebody said, well, you're going to have to have some kind of connector between 45 and 322, and then everybody from Potter said, put it in Bollesburg. And that kind of turned me to say, you know what? We're on our own.
Well, I don't know. We shouldn't.
What we had was called Love Creek, oh...
I, that's what I told them, I said, Warner Boulevard, we've got one.
Well, we also, the...
Well, that's not true, because PennDOT does not direct, they tell us not to send anybody over that's not built for the right weight. For, for anything. So that is not really a connector road. Anyway, keep it all serious for that.
I can drive from one to the other as a connector.
Okay. Nothing more on the manager's report?
Nope.
Uh, the motion to approve the vouchers?
Let me ask number three. Is, is the Chantel, is Comcast going to stay in the area, or is this a competitor?
Yeah, Chantel's going to come in. The meeting was very interesting. Chantel's model is they come in and they overbuild the Comcast system, and then they offer service, but they're not necessarily going to offer service to every street, every town, every neighborhood and every municipality. But they're going to offer, and they're triple play. They do internet, voice, and TV.
They're more like windstream with respect to being high rises?
No, 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 they're not going to do the windstream model. They'll offer to neighborhoods.
So I might not get it on Honey's Circle Drive.
No, they said if they find like, if they, if they go out and do a survey, and they'll do some surveying of the area, and if they find like a lot of rock they would have to dig through, that's going to drive up their cost. So maybe they don't include that in the first area that they go out and try to expand service. But it's not a windstream where they care to dig.
Does it do an underground cable?
It, I don't know.
No, 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 they want to use, they want to use the...
They want to use the existing poles, and they have to survey the area too to find out how that...
It's fiber optic, but I think it's still a cable, I think.
Yes.
Vouchers.
Oh, wait, don't we, do, we have one, anything else on the manager's report? Nothing you want to report to us with your manager's report?
Put your hand up, just put your hand up.
I got engaged on Friday.
It has to be reviewed by that committee.
Has to go to center region planning.
Center region management or review committee.
Part of our conference of plan, I don't know.
We're meeting at Duffy's. I will make a motion that we approve voucher number 2022-10 for the amount of $291,251.28.
Second. Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, no? Okay. Any reports?
Can we just, can we, I mean, there's, just say Whitehall Regional Park, and we'll move on.
Oh, gee. Parks capital still hasn't met.
Well, you get the climate change.
Executive Committee, Executive Committee set the agenda. Parks capital...
Yeah, I went...
Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, go ahead, give us a...
Okay. Again, it was all about Whitehall Regional Park, and I mean, it was like, we're, we're meeting again tomorrow. I'd say, let's just go and get it all ironed out.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow's combined meeting of capital finance and authority.
I don't want to go, so be going tomorrow.
Since I got two seats, yeah. Parks Governance Committee is not meeting until the first of the year, at the earliest, and the Parks Authority is dealing with the Whitehall Regional Park. MPO.
Okay, MPO did not meet, we meet the end of this month. Facilities, we met, and we talked about the modification for the building thing, and we passed that to send it on. And then we talked about Whitehall Regional Park and Millbrook Marsh, and some of the things that were going on with there. Again, there's a lot going on, and it's very active, and right now, there's really nothing to report that's finalized. Everything's kind of in progress at this point.
Like College Area Connector Pell Study.
And we just had the, the open houses and reported what we're doing here, so...
Public Safety.
We meet tomorrow, that's part of, I got a joint meeting with them and Emergency Management. Who holds, who holds at that meeting? I can't remember.
Lucy and Public Safety.
Yeah, Lucy, we're doing that one tomorrow.
Emergency Management.
You're, you're in Mr. Committee. Um, Human Resources.
Okay, we met late in October, so we didn't get a report from that yet. So, we discussed ad nauseam the possibility of, their Juneteenth being a holiday for the con employees, and similar discussions we had here. Um, we, uh, had a request, doesn't really relate to us, but maybe, Regional Fire wants to hire four part-time people, um, again, to keep the place running without having to go all, all paid. Um, CRPA, we had a, so the planning agency would like, um, has developed an intern and recruitment policy that they wanna use to try to get extra help, um, give interns some experience, and hopefully, um, yeah, recruit, um, because we're having problems there. And the other, one last item, we discussed a, um, possible pay philosophy statement of the con, put it out there. Eh, we're like lukewarm on that, but, uh-
Pay philosophy?
Pay philosophy, basically.
What do you know?
Well, basically, we put it out there that, you know, we're a good employer, con's a good employer, and, you know, our pay rates are competitive, and they wanted to put a percentage above what market is, and, um, the committee didn't really like that idea.
I was gonna say, with the, with the budget numbers that they keep coming back with, I wouldn't put that out.
Yeah, no. Um, and just one final thing. We, uh, we'll be, uh, meeting with the executive committee this month and getting a, a report from the consultant about the wage and benefits study. That's it.
Okay, Lucy.
Yeah, we met, uh, November third, two main topics. Uh, Mark talked about the presentation on the regional development capacity of the Red Cap Project, which looks at available building land in the center region. There's still a lot of land available. And then we shifted over to Jim May doing a presentation on, uh, the update of the comprehensive plan, uh, new model for doing the comprehensive plan, looking at a system that land cap the county is used, and it's been very successful. So, that's basically what we did. Solar Power, and, uh, some good news on the solar power. The replies to the HEP, we have, uh, four, uh, good utility-grained, uh, solar, uh, shovel, uh, Center County, and, uh, Green County, and, uh, Washington County. All fairly good size, one hundred acre, kind of, uh, so the first review by the tech committee is, is doing that, and we'll get into the second review. We're meeting Wednesday morning, nine o'clock, to go over the first sort of sample of these, uh, replies. Put's in drastic.
Thank you. Um, let's see, Finance.
We are going to meet on the eighteenth, and we'll take back all the comments that we gave them, and we'll go through them, and maybe have a vote yes or no, whenever that comes out. We'll forward that to the general, ask the, ask the executive to forward to the general forum, to send back to the committee, committee to the miss ballot to vote yes.
Maybe vote yes.
Huh?
Maybe vote yes.
Well, I'm just saying.
Okay, climate action.
Oh, I did a little bit of reporting on that.
You're writing stuff at the same time?
I can't chew gum and walk at the same time. Uh, we, we had, the meeting was this afternoon, but I got detained. I couldn't go, well, I couldn't attend, let's put it this way. Uh, so, it was, it's a single thing, except they, they, they discussed the refuse waste and the, the, the whole thing. And they stopped at six o'clock, six o'clock starting time in, in the summertime, and they got very few complaints against it, very few missed pickups. They, every year, every week, they guess they do have, they do miss pickups because they don't have a trash out. That was not usual. Uh, they got very few comments back out of sixteen thousand, uh, sixteen thousand, um, customers. I think they got around seven comments back against it. Maybe, I, well, fifteen for it and seven, fifteen against and seven for it. Uh, the borough, as I understand it, decided not to allow them to do that, because, uh, I guess the borough people didn't wanna have a trash out at six o'clock or six-thirty instead of seven-thirty. And they use an excuse for the noise ordinance, but they, as I understand, we are exempt from noise ordinance, so.
Well, they pick, stick, always pick for their own trash anyhow.
No, 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 recycling.
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 Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, that's, and there's, we're at the center, remember, memo, memo of understanding, and they wanna change it. I guess you'll see what it is. I'm not gonna read it, talk about it. They wanna change one paragraph, which may be good or maybe bad. I don't know yet.
Heritage Museum.
Uh, we're close to season. Uh, we had a nice Halloween party. Uh, we had, we are gonna have something, but since they are gonna have the, what do they call it? Day in Town and Bollesburg.
No, Hometown Christmas.
Hometown Christmas, we'll probably, may do something over there.
The Heritage Museum is planning an event on December tenth, I believe. This is Saturday. They just sent me all, they sent me all the information about it. So more to come with the next E update.
Something to be advertised on Channel Ten, or just have a third.
That's Hometown Christmas.
That's Hometown Christmas.